All right, good morning. We're here again for a second but special meeting. Let me give the whole details. It's Wednesday, May 14th, 2014. We're in the Senator Hearing Room in Cordial Square, 555 Court Street Northeast, again for a special meeting, and this is to interview the four Republican nominations, nominees for the vacant Marion County position. But let's start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I think we're, I'll just lay out a few things here. I'd introduce each of the nominees. Positions have been seated by alphabetical order. I'll start with Kim Brady, Kevin Cameron, Marty Hyon, I hope I'm saying that exactly right, thank you, and James Loftus. And I'll say it again later perhaps, but I do appreciate you coming here today, but more coming forward and offering your talents to the county, and I think that's exceptional. So, let's go over some ground rules. I mentioned your nameplates were in alphabetical order, and then we'll rotate the order of who answers the question first, so that all nominees will get an opportunity to go first. The nominees have been asked to prepare a five-minute opening statement and a five-minute closing statement, and we'll ask eight additional questions of the panel members, and the responses to these questions are limited to three minutes. Now, whether it's the five-minute opening or closing, or three-minute questions, a staff member will hold up a yellow card. Hey, let's just, I, this is right, now Salem uses-
That's actually Lynn will hold up your card.
We should have lights, but we don't normally do this. A yellow card will indicate one minute remaining, and a red card will tell when time's expired. And this is kind of important for all of them. You're not required, I'm not meaning to look at anybody, I don't know who likes to talk a lot yet, we're not required to fail the entire time, as some questions lend themselves to a brief response. And then at the conclusion, Janet and I will, or may, make some comments. So, anything to add? Then I think it's time to get started, and Kim, by the luck of the draw, I would ask you to begin, and if you'd like to give your opening comments, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good morning. It is an honor to be here to speak with you this morning. I grew up here in Marion County on a small farm near Omsville, and attended Salem Academy High School, later graduating from Portland State University with a Bachelor of Science degree in political science. Once I graduated, I was commissioned as an officer in the United States Army and served four years on active duty. While in the Army, I lived in many places in the United States, as well as other places around the world. Marion County has so much to offer. It has a mild climate, easy access to mountains and beaches, it's the state capital, we have farmland and city life, and a very diverse population. It is because of these things that I moved back to Oregon and to my home here in Marion County after nearly ten years away in order to raise my daughter here where I grew up. I want to give back to my community. I want to make sure that it is one that provides all of our youth the same opportunities that we had when we grew up. The position of Marion County Commissioner is a management position. As a captain in the United States Army, I went through extensive training in command and control. In Korea, I was the commanding officer responsible for management and interface between the Army and the Korean civilians. I returned to Fort Carson, Colorado, and was selected to serve on the commanding general staff. Again, working on the interface between the commanding general staff, the units there on base, as well as the civilian population in Colorado Springs. My military service has prepared me to serve in the private sector. When I left the military, I worked for two manufacturing companies, Pillsbury and Smucker's, managing several different production lines, and later working as a human resources manager, responsible for assisting the personnel through a very difficult transition when they closed the plant. In my current position at SAFE, my job requires me to apply very complex law in helping constituents receive benefits. These management experiences and skills qualify me for the position of Marion County Commissioner. I have held management positions in government, private business, and currently work for nonprofit corporation. With such a diverse background, I have worked with bureaucracy, dealt with profit and loss, and now work in a service role. All of this uniquely qualifies me to serve the people of Marion County. In these difficult times and challenges of high unemployment and other issues involving people losing health care coverage and those sorts of things, I have proven leadership to make tough decisions and help our county move in a positive direction. I would count it an honor to serve Marion County as a county commissioner.
All right. Thank you. Kevin, if you're ready.
Thank you, Commissioner Carlson and Commissioner Brentano, for having us here today and for the excellent job you've been doing during this vacancy. Before I get started, I want to also publicly recognize Commissioner Milne for the service and the time that she gave this county and the great job that she did with the three of you over many, many years. And I want to say thank you to Patty, I'm not sure she's watching this today, but-
Kevin, I hate to interrupt, but would you pull that microphone just a little bit closer? I'm struggling a little bit. Thank you.
You want me to start over?
No, I got it.
Because I could never say it twice, the same, right? Okay. So, I want to share a little bit about my background and who I am. My parents, Nancy and Jean Cameron, instilled a heart of service in me at a very young age. My mom served campfire grills, was a campfire grill leader, and took me as a tag along, and I had to haul the water and do all those things. My dad took me to work on Saturday mornings downtown Los Angeles. He had an orange juice route, and he'd get me up at three or four in the morning, we'd go and serve line operators that operated restaurants in places in downtown Los Angeles, in the courthouse, and other places. And my dad demonstrated to me how important it was to treat everybody with respect and dignity, no matter who they were. And they set that in my heart at a very young age. My favorite ride at Disneyland as a kid growing up, of all places, was Great Moments with Mr. Lincoln. It wasn't the Matterhorn, it was Great Moments with Mr. Lincoln, and I would sit there and go through that ride over and over. My parents thought I was a little crazy, but I admired Abraham Lincoln for the leader that he was and what he did for our country in a divisive situation. So I was always raised to serve, and I had a heart for our nation and a heart to give back. I moved to Oregon in 1978, attended college at Oregon State University, graduated in 1980, and met my wife Judy shortly after that. She's a farm girl from Omsville, born and raised. In fact, I drove by her farmhouse yesterday on the way out to Staton for a breakfast meeting. And she's instilled that in our daughters, a hard work ethic. And we had an opportunity to move back to Oregon in 1988. We actually lived in Southern California for three years, and Colorado in our careers. But we came back here in 1988 and raised our two now-grown daughters, who are both married and still live in the state, one in Kaiser and one in Beaverton. We started our business in 1995, Cafe Today Restaurants, after I had worked career for many, many people. I've given you my resume, you can see my work history in detail there. Cafe Today, we started in 1995, we grew it to where we had over 100 employees in our peak, managed a payroll of $3 million in sales, equivalent to those restaurants. The most we ever had going was 15 restaurants, and still today we have 20, or five restaurants up in the Portland market. After about 10 years in the building the business, I was appointed to the state representative position in 2005, February of 2005, and have currently been serving at the state level for House District 19. A little deja vu sitting here in front of the two of you, again, with Commissioner Milne at that time. So what drives me is service, a servant heart, service from the Creator and the blessings that we were given from our Creator. Those who have died for us and fought for us in our country allow us to be here today, and I hope that I will be able to continue to serve. And there is a thing, my favorite movie is Remember the Titans, and there's a statement that he makes in that movie, "Attitude reflects leadership." And I want to bring leadership to Marion County to add to the really good things that you're already doing here and improve upon them. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Good morning, Commissioners and Marion County residents.
Yes, Marty, I'm gonna have to give, if you'd pull, no, the microphone's just gotta be real close here. And pull it down just a little bit.
Is that better?
I think pull it down just a little bit, then you'll be good.
How's that?
Pretty good.
Okay. My name is Marty Hyon. I am not a politician, I'm a stay-at-home mom, and I have lived and worked in Marion County for about 25 years. I'm currently a member of the Coordinating Council for Salem Community Emergency Response Team. I was also part of the City of Salem Sidewalk Committee, working with other citizens and city staff to find an equitable way to maintain sidewalks in Salem. Most of my family lives here in Marion County, so the future of this county is very important to me. I have held various jobs throughout my life, but most have been in information technology. I started as a computer programmer and progressed to programmer analyst, systems analyst, supervisor, IT manager, and finally database administrator. I worked for the Oregon Secretary of State's Information Technology Division for over 13 years, providing support from programming to systems design and database administration for the Elections Division, Notary Public Business Services, and Uniform Commercial Code. I also assisted the Oregon Department of Education's IT department with the design of a database used to analyze student test results. While with the Oregon Secretary of State, I gained some management experience as well, serving at the pleasure of the Deputy Secretary of State as its interim IT manager for about six months. Later, I worked at the City Data Center in a part-time temporary position, providing technical support for the Salem Police Department. At that time, they were working on implementation of a new 911 system. Throughout my public sector tenure, I have worked very closely with my customers, the end-users of the systems we developed. This gave me an intimate understanding of all the jobs that they performed. I have a wide variety of experience in the government sector, which gives me insight into policy procedures and implementation of laws. IT work requires analytical abilities. I am a solutions-oriented individual who enjoys solving problems and one with the experience to resolve issues and set policies in organization, in an organization. In the private sector, I've worked as a programmer and then a programmer analyst for Farm Bureau of Iowa, an insurance carrier, and then for Agri Industries, a cooperative of the farming community. As a consultant, I have provided technical services for both public and private entities. Some of these included the Portland Water Bureau, Oregon Bureau of Labor and Industries, and several private businesses in the forest products and agricultural industries. I have been involved in all facets of the RFP, which is Request for Proposal Process. I have written statements of work and evaluated proposals to determine the best solution for my employer. And as a consultant, I've been on the other end of the process, writing the proposals and submitting estimates of work hours involved in response to the RFPs. Local government is the most important level of government. It is closest to the people it is charged with serving. It has more effect on the lives of individuals than any other level, or at least it should have. Government should be like a triangle, where the control and authority of the federal government should be at the tip, the smallest part, and local governments, like Marion County, the base, more directly accessible and controlled by its citizens. It is for this reason that Marion County citizens deserve nothing less than a full-time commissioner, someone who will devote their time to them, even if only for six months. I believe I have the experience and background needed to balance the commission team in the best interests of the citizens of Marion County. I would consider it an honor to be able to represent my fellow Marion County residents as a Marion County Commissioner until the end of this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. James?
Thank you, Commissioner Brentano and Carlson. My name is James Loftus. I don't envy you guys. You have a very tough decision ahead of you. We have a panel of very qualified people. I feel honored just to be sitting here at the table with them. I'm a former city councillor for the city of Staton, a former vice president for the OEM manufacturer of Computerland, a former farmer, a former Chamber of Commerce member. But more importantly, I was a member of an organization that analyzed legislation for about seven years. So I understand the impacts and potential unintended consequences of how legislation, when read or gets implemented, can impact the citizens. I understand that as a board member, you really have three separate functions. You have the legislative, the executive, and the quasi-judicial. And I've played that role. The importance of what you folks do was hit on by Marty in her introduction about being directly representing the citizens. And I think that is a highly important function. I took the initiative to go and meet with the sheriff, the DA, the tax assessor, the county clerk, Public Works, to reach out to them. And one of the things that struck me was their commitment. Not only their commitment, but the focus that they had on the citizen, as they put it, customer service. That when an inquiry comes in, or you have an issue that you have to deal with, how is that citizen gonna leave the building? Are they gonna feel like they got something accomplished? Are they gonna feel like they were able to resolve the issue? And I think that's really what's important. And I think I can assist the county in providing customer service, my talents in legislation, my past experience on the council. And again, I do not envy your decision. You folks, you have a very tough decision to make, and we have highly qualified people up here. And I thank you for the opportunity to address you.
All right. James?
So, question number one, and Kevin, you get the first bite at the apple on this one. Describe your volunteer experience in Marion County's communities. Include, if relevant, your experiences with civic groups located within Marion County, such as chambers of commerce, Rotary Clubs, and so forth.
Thank you. Well, I've been heavily involved even before I was selected to represent House District 19, and that goes way back to coaching Little League teams and going to the state playoffs, which was a blast, with 12- and 14-year-old girls who now are grown, married, and have children. Supported many organizations through that time. Currently a member of the Salem Chamber, have been for many years, part of their government affairs team that meets at least once a month. I'm involved right now, I'm in an annual program through the Chamber called Leadership Salem, and have been involved with their youth. I go to schools all the time, talk to high school students, mid-school, elementary school students, to try to encourage them, to give them a vision of hope for their future, because I think that's the number-one thing that kids have, is that they always have hope. It doesn't matter what it is they're hopeful for, but they've got to continue to strive for something. I'm a member of the Salem City Club, and then many organizations that I attend and give my time and talents and dollars to, the Liberty House, Young Life. I serve on the Corbin University Leadership Political Engagement Advisory Board that has just started in honor of Mike McLaren, the scholarship that we're working on there for students that are gonna be starting in that program next year. I serve on the Marion County Reentry Council, the Governor's Reentry Council. I've been involved at Morning Star Community Church since 1989, served on the board until 2012 for many years, and recently finished a six-year term on the OSU Alumni Board. I hope that doesn't cost me any votes.
As a mom, most of my service has been geared towards kids and my son's school. I did serve one year as PTA Chair, and of course, I've been a chaperone for school trips and sometimes helped out in the classroom. My husband and I actually chaperoned the Snowball, which is, if you don't know what it is, it's an annual prom for all the high schoolers in the area. We did that for about 20 years. I participated with the Salem Sidewalk Committee, and I'll explain more about that later in one of the other questions, but basically, we were looking for an equitable solution to maintaining the sidewalks, the city could no longer keep up with the cost of the maintenance. And of course, I'm a PCP, a precinct committee person, I can, that is a volunteer position in the county. And I'm a member of CERT Community Emergency Response Team, being prepared for whatever may or may not come, hopefully won't come, but you still need to be prepared, and I'm very, that's very important to me. Oh, I'm also very involved over the years in my church as well.
James?
I have donated countless hours of my time into analyzing legislation for citizens to be able to understand. I'm a former city councillor, Chamber member. I have been around the state publicly speaking and volunteering my time on behalf of the Pacific Freedom Foundation, primarily talking about Agenda 21, Sustainable Development, the Oregon health care legislation and its impact on citizens. I am an elected PCP member, and I donate a lot of my time to church when I have it available. And this is, to me, an opportunity to provide another service by volunteering for this position. This is a large responsibility. It's a heavy decision that you folks will have to make, and I look forward to the opportunity of serving Marion County if you happen to select me.
Kim?
I too am a mom, and much of my volunteer work has been surrounding that very important role that I play. However, I did start as early as college being a coach. I had run in track during high school and wanted to give back and was a coach for my high school while I was attending college. I also was involved with the PTA at Willamette Valley Christian School, where my daughter attended kindergarten and first grade. And then when she moved to Salem Academy, I also have volunteered there, both in the classroom and as a chaperone, for every field trip that she had while she was in grade school. I have been a member of the Band Booster Program at Salem Academy and have been a president of that in the past. I also was a soccer coach for my daughter when she was younger. I served at my church as a Sunday school teacher and at various activities for camps and trips that they did through the church as well. I have volunteered to be the team parent for her volleyball team, and am currently in the process of becoming involved with the Veterans Court and being a battle buddy. I have just attended the first court this last week and got the application, and am planning to start that service as well.
All right, the next question will start with Marty. And it's, the question is this. What are the particular areas of interest where you would like to focus as a county commissioner, i.e. public safety, parks, children and families, transportation, et cetera? Are there county or regional boards or commission assignments where you would especially like to serve?
Well, I find all the areas interesting, and am certainly willing to work and will give my all to any area that needs attention. However, I do find that public safety and transportation would be something I would have special interest in, and if that, and for as far as commissions, I'm really interested, obviously, in emergency management and preparedness as a CERT member, and I know that that's really already taken, so I know why I won't get that, but that's okay. So, I'm happy to be, and would be satisfied, to take over Commissioner Milne's community assignments that she had and give them my full attention.
All right. James?
Public safety is always at the top of the list. It's a majority of our budget, so obviously, public safety comes first. Along with that would be transportation, the mental health and families aspect of it. I have a new interest in learning how the mental health programs are working because of a family member. And I appreciate how Marion County has handled that family member. And it has opened up my eyes to the conditions that other Marion County residents suffer through. And I think that public safety and mental health are directly linked, after talking with the DA and the sheriff and with the mental health director. So I think that that is something that I would have an interest in, but I would be willing, able, and ready to take over any position that is necessary, any Patty Milne's responsibilities, and any of those that you want to offload.
All right. Thank you, James. Kim?
Specific areas that I would be interested in would be, number one, the Veterans Task Force. 10% of our population are veterans, and with all the activities that we have had overseas, I think that there are unique areas in which we can impact the lives of Marion County residents, and helping those soldiers as they return. We don't have the same resources here in Oregon as a lot of other states do, because we don't have any active-duty bases, and helping those veterans to connect with resources, I think, is very important, to keep them out of the judicial system and the mental health system as well. I also am very interested in public safety, and specifically would like to be involved with juveniles. And having heard the DA recently talk a lot about marijuana and the challenges that they've had in other states where they have legalized that, I think that that is something that we need to be on the forefront of in order to prevent our children from being heavily impacted by that, as well as trying to fight against that becoming legalized and a norm for our kids. And then also, health care and the impacts of the health care laws are something I'm very interested in. And- very interested in, and trying to help the residents of Marion County navigate through a very complex system in the best way possible.
All right, Kevin?
Thank you. Obviously, safety first and last, you know, and I come from a philosophy in our restaurants that, you know, we ask people, what kind of decision-making process do, ask employee, what kind of decision-making process do people go through before they decide where to dine out? And a lot of times they'll say food or service, and I'll say, what if we just had a hepatitis outbreak? They're not going to come here. So I think all of us agree that public safety is the top priority, that we need to make sure we pay attention to, and I think it's a responsibility that all the commissioners take very strongly. So, and I've been involved in that, and public safety is a very broad area. It goes from courts to reentry, to the jail, the sheriff. I mean, it's a very big responsibility. I will do whatever the citizens of Marion County want me to do and whatever you would want me to do. I specifically have a passion for economic development, because I know all ships will rise if we can rise the tide and create, help private sector employers create more jobs and jobs that will raise the median income in the state of Oregon and specifically here in Marion County. If we can get out of the way or do the things that employers need us to do in county government, that would be very helpful. So that's another passion of mine as well. Again, willing to serve wherever the call comes.
All right, thank you all. Question. On to question number three, and James, you get to do this one first. What is the largest organizational budget for which you have been responsible and the largest number of employees that you have supervised, both directly and indirectly?
As a former Vice President of Great West Technologies, Hong Kong, I had about 300 people below me and about a $50 million a year budget. And then I would say that the city of Salem, we were in a unique position. Again, the budget was kind of doubled because of a transportation improvement project and then a water sewer improvement project, and I believe those combined budgets were about 50 million as well.
I have been responsible for millions of dollars in assets in the Army, as well as as a production supervisor, not specifically controlling a budget in those areas, but was responsible for a budget as a human resources manager at Smucker's, indirectly supervising 120-plus employees, as well as supervising and managing 70 people while I was in Korea, 65 of which were Korean civilians. So it's been at varying different degrees depending on the position I've had in the past.
Kevin?
So in the private sector, it's varied from large organizations. I was a regional training manager for a national restaurant chain where I covered the whole area of, from Bakersfield down to Nogales, Arizona, was responsible for making sure training programs were implemented and supporting district operational managers in those and facilitated a lot of human resource development plans. Here locally, Vip's Restaurants, 1988, when I came back to Oregon, I was the Director of Operations for 15 restaurants at that time. We probably had, I'm guessing, 250 or more employees. The Cafe Today, at our peak, we had 100 employees and, as I said, 15 operations. And then there's some that would say I was responsible or have oversight over a $60 billion budget, all-funds budget at the state, but I would argue with that, and that I had anything to do with supervising employees other than my Chief of Self, Denise. Many people call themselves Chiefs of Staff in the Capitol, but when you have no staff, we've named her the Chief of Self. So that's probably a broad range of different supervision and budget opportunities that I've had.
Thank you. Marty?
Well, it's been 21 years since I was interim IT manager, and some of the details of the job I honestly do not remember anymore. I don't know if we were in a budget cycle or not, and since I was only an interim manager, I'm sure I had assistants if we were. I did help direct the state to the purchase of the Oracle Database product, though, for Secretary of State, so I did help them spend some of that money in the budget. I believe it was 68 employees that I was directly managing at that time, and it was a time of great upheaval at that agency. My boss had been let go, and I was called in to be a manager of my peers, knowing that I would be a peer with them once again. And so it was a very, very precarious position to be in, because I wanted to have goodwill when I returned to my technical degree. And I worked really hard to keep the existing positions we had. We were leaning towards going more with consultants, but I didn't believe that this was the best solution in the long term for our agency, so I worked hard trying to keep those positions and those people in those positions. And even though there were only six to eight then, I'd let you know that there are 30 now, so I'm glad that they finally understand that the people that are employed by an agency or a department have more, they just care more, you know, and they'll put their all into it, a lot more than a consultant. So that's the best I can do for this answer, sorry.
I'm right, this is Kim, and the question is, how many county meetings where the commissioners were present have you attended in person during 2014? How many have you watched online or on TV?
This would be my second meeting where both of you have been present. I have, however, over this last year, watched many online through CCTV, as I've been doing research on the county and the county's involvement in different programs.
Kevin?
Thank you. I forgot one really critical budget that I've managed in my life, and that would be my family budget, and I think probably the most important for all of us sitting here successfully. As far as county meetings, starting in the spring of 2013, late spring, I couldn't tell you how many I've attended where you, one of the commissioners or more, were at those meetings, but I think it's probably an average of two to three a month since 2013. I think, just to give you an example, yesterday is a good example, I started in Staton at the Commissioners' Breakfast, which I've attended probably at least half a dozen, eight of those maybe, over the last year, and started there, then came here to the building and sat in on the Housing Authority meeting and listened to their presentation and your interaction with them, and then traveled out to the Oregon Garden and sat through the Oregon Garden Foundation that was, you know, important part of Marion County and what's going on there. So that's just an example of one day, but I've had many days where I've done similar type things and just trying to listen, learn, and sometimes as a public member have maybe voiced an opinion and given some input as well. Oh, I don't watch it on TV. I don't get CCTV. I'm sorry, because I live in a place where I have cable, and I don't want to, I have a hard time keeping up on my emails, much less going online to watch more TV shows. Sorry.
Marty?
Well, since I'm not running for this office, I'm just wanting to fill it in for the next six months. This was not on my radar until Commissioner Milne resigned, and so I have given it some attention, though, after I decided to go ahead with this. I have attended four in person, if you consider the farewell to Commissioner Milne as one of those, because you both were here. I also watched just portion of an online meeting, because, sorry, I was having technical problems. That's my husband's area now, not mine. I have watched several informational videos, though, about how county government works, and have been online reading the summary budget, and I can't remember the name of the other document I read. I think it's the Economic Outlook for the Future about tourism and things like that. So I have done some studying to see, you know, what all is going on in the county.
You know, I keep adding to the number on how many meetings I've been with you guys. I think it's pegged at six. Online, I think it's six or seven times, because it's been specific issue-oriented. And unlike Kevin here, I'm not running for the office, so I haven't been out attending the meetings. However, when there's an issue like the stormwater management, I try to stay on top of issues. I have gone and, again, took the initiative to meet with all of the key players, Public Works, mental health, sheriff, DA. I have read and studied the budget, the Emergency Operations Manual, the economic forecast, but primarily I focused mostly on the minutes, so I could kind of get an idea of the issues that you folks have had to tangle with. And so I think I could step in and be pretty informed as to what needs to be done and where you're moving forward.
All right. So is it Kevin that's first on this one?
Yep.
I believe so. All right, so Kevin, we're in question number five. When you are presented with two conflicting pieces of information, how do you discern what is true and what is not?
Commissioner, that never happens. No, and all teasing aside, there's a process that I would go through, obviously seeking more information, and that information can come from many different sources. It could come from individuals who I trust that may be experts in that particular area, because I am not, I'm not an expert, for example, in mental health. I'm not an expert in a lot of things. Now, if you asked me about a restaurant issue, I probably could come up with a pretty good solution quickly. So going to experts, going to counsel, whether that's legal counsel, whether that's a counsel of somebody who has an expert opinion in that particular area, doing some research myself, you know, everything that's on the internet obviously is not true, but doing some research on the internet in journals. So it's a process that I would go through before I make the decision. I think one of the key things in that process, though, is to stay humble, to always, you know, and it's taught me this in my relationships, especially at home, is that you may be right, I may be wrong. And I think having that attitude, as I make the best decision possible, and the oath says, "To the best of my ability." And I will not claim to have always made the right decisions in my life, or in decisions in politics, or in my business, but I will go back and make it right, or at least listen to those that think I've made the wrong decision. And that's part of the process, is to try to get as much information as possible before you go one way or the other on an issue.
Marty?
First and foremost, I would try not to have an opinion until I'd heard everything and learned everything I want to learn. I would try to go into it with an open mind. So assuming that we have conflicting pieces of information, then we probably have conflicting parties, people that are for and against it, and I would want to talk to both parties. And I would also want to evaluate, what is their reason for or against this? You know, what's their other agenda, something that's going on, their rationale for their thoughts on the conflicting thing. I would put away the emotion and focus on the facts, and I would also do my own independent research online, perhaps talk to the legal counsel, as well as other people that don't have a dog in the fight, that are not, you know, that are neutral, they don't have an opinion really one way or the other to look at the pros and the cons. In the end, I would go with whatever is the most moral and legally correct.
I guess the best way for me to answer that would be intelligent inquiry, who, what, why, when, where, how. I would want to know facts. I would want to know what kind of investigation was done, what the results of the investigation were. If we, if, you know, this is a very open-ended question, so if we have a victim, I'd like to hear what the victim said. If we have, you know, a perpetrator, what he had to say through direct interview. But I think most importantly, I'd be trying to find out what solution, what kind of settlement that they're looking for. And is it emotional? Is it financial? Is it a simple apology? So there's all levels of negotiations going on when you're trying to resolve conflicts. Some of them have to do with egos, some of them have to do with money, and you have to be sensitive to both of those. I have negotiated some rather large transactions on behalf of Samsung, Korea, and it all played out through emotions. There was a dialogue that was going on, and because of the translation that was taking effect, it almost killed this deal. And by removing that aspect of it, I was able to resolve the issue, and we were able to get our shipments in. You know, so it's the same kind of situation, where if you encounter a problem, you need to know what the facts are. You can't just rush to judgment. Sometimes you're faced with trying to deal with a crisis, and you have to make an immediate decision. And if you find that the immediate decision that you've made was wrong, because it was based on information that was incorrect, then you want to stop it, because otherwise you run into what's called a cascading failure effect, where you continue to make the same mistake over and over again, because you didn't go back to verify the information that the first decision was made on. So I would try to build some type of redundancy and fact-checking into how I assess the information.
Okay, and Kim?
If I was presented with two conflicting pieces of information, in order to discern the right way, I would do independent research, as has been stated before, and talk to experts in the field, seeking out people who, we cannot be a subject matter expert on 100% of things, and so we have to be able to have people that we trust, that we can go to, to get that information, whether it's the legal counsel, the administrative officer for the county, or other subject matter experts. I would seek their opinions, evaluating the motives of everybody involved to determine why it is we have conflicting information, and discern which way is right and make the correct decision.
All right, starting with Marty, the next question is, describe a situation. When you worked out a solution to a problem in conjunction with a group of people, and were you generally disagreed with that group's philosophy or point of view?
So the situation that I selected was when I was on the Salem, City of Salem Sidewalk Committee. Previous to that, it was my understanding that the city of Salem, except for a new house being built, would take care of the repairs of all sidewalks within the city, and that that was paid for with our tax dollars. During this process, we watched various videos and things, and I felt like we were being led down a predetermined path, and I didn't particularly care for it. If I'm going to spend my time to listen and to participate, then everybody needs to keep an open mind, and really look at the whole thing. They wanted property, they, as in the city, wanted property owners to be responsible for any maintenance costs for sidewalks outside of, in front of their property. The problem I had with this was that a lot of the damage is done due to city trees, and since a homeowner has no authority to even trim a city tree, let alone cut down a city tree, I found it highly unfair that they would have to repair a sidewalk at their own cost, caused by a tree they had no control over. So when we were done, I guess I was just very adamant that this was not fair, and that the city should be the one repairing the sidewalks when it is caused by something that is controlled and/or owned by the city. And I believe that's what ended up happening later on. I believe that's the rule. But that rule was not actually written out when we were finished with the process.
James?
I, the way this question is worded, it states that I would have a solution, when it's really a group decision. So I can't really answer the question the way it's phrased, because if you're in a group, then it's not your solution. And I have found that if you have a group of people in a room with competing interests, that usually there is one or two items that they are passionate about. And that some of the other issues that they have on the table are fungible, they're negotiable. You can forestall them. And one of the issues that I think was recently concluded, but started out under our reign with the City of Dayton, was the Saniam Water Control District. And the constant contention that was occurring between any time we expanded our boundaries, or any time a building permit was issued, or any time there might have been a motor vehicle accident where either gasoline, oil, or diesel was discharged through the accident and ended up, you know, penetrating the edge of the ditch or into the ditch. So the resolution is that we attempt to monitor our water on a much more frequent basis, that we respond to those types of incidences with barriers, that we will assist financially to the Water Control District in their maintenance of the ditches. So there are resolutions to the issues that face each of the different parties. And there's a specific requirement under NEPA for coordination, and I felt that as the city, as one of the agencies, we had to meet that obligation for coordination.
Kim?
As I was thinking about this one, I mean, to be honest, this is a difficult question. And I, it brought back the memories 10 years ago, when I was going through the plant closure in Woodburn, of the Smuckers plant there. And as the human resource manager, it was my responsibility to help the employees transition through that very difficult process. I disagreed with the fact that the plant was being closed, but had absolutely no say in that, because it was a business decision. But in that role as human resources manager, I worked with the plant manager, as well as the Smuckers people back in Ohio, to make sure that the benefits that were provided to the employees of that plant, as they were closing, were the best possible things that we could help them transition to a new phase of their life, helping them access unemployment benefits, as well as retraining options, and access the benefits that the company was providing for them, as well as helping some people with even training on English as a second language. And so it was difficult, and there were heated times, but we were able to make it the best possible solution for those employees.
Kevin?
I think the number-one thing is to remember that everybody has a number-one on their forehead. We're all created equal and have equal value in life, not necessarily equal talents and abilities. But if you keep that in perspective, it helps you to be civil when you go into a situation that has, what you're describing here, potential high conflict. There's been many of those situations in my life. I think the most recent one, not most recent, but the one that sticks out in my mind, was in the 2011 legislature, where we were tied. And after that election was over, I was in a position, as a part of the leadership team, to actually come together with opposing sides, Democrats and Republicans, to figure out a structure that we will govern ourselves by. And you talk about opposing philosophies, opposing sides in a situation, and that led to, and people said we would never be able to do it, it was in the public eye. That led to a opportunity to structure a whole governance in the state Capitol for that session, that, in my opinion, was probably one of the best experiences that I ever had, working with groups of people to get things done. Now, obviously, the things that, you know, one side wanted to get done over here, over here, didn't probably get done, but we worked together and solved really high potential conflict situations. And it wasn't easy, it wasn't, one of those things were throughout the whole session, we didn't have high conflict. In fact, removing chairs of committees was one of those things that had to be put on the table. So that's probably one. And then, obviously, family situations, business situations that I could talk. And then one, here locally, would be in my church leadership situation, where really we had some opposing views, that we were able to bring people together and get through some conflict resolution. The closer you are to family, the harder those things are to deal with. Oh, last thing I would say is the redistricting in 2011 session was a great success, and got to serve on that particular group to make that happen.
Thank you.
Question seven, and this one starts with James.
Does Marty get one?
I thought Marty started on that one.
I think she did.
Right, okay. So number question seven is, imagine that you are participating in a regional meeting of a 20-person board, where your vote is needed for a quorum. As the meeting begins, you check your email and find a link to a national media story asserting that aborted fetuses are being incinerated for electricity at the county's waste-to-energy facility. Within the first 24 hours, you learn that the waste-to-energy facility and the medical waste hauler deny the allegations. However, the British Columbia Ministry of Health officials affirm them. Describe your response and what specific actions you would take.
Thank you, commissioners. I think, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations on the way you did handle that crisis. I think that was the appropriate way. The conflict in information leaves a wound in the community. And it would be, I think, appropriate to not only what you've already done, which was issue an emergency stop order, and rewrite the contract, and come up with a certification form. I believe that the certification form could use an "under the penalty of perjury" statement to give it additional meat. But I think also that you might want to consider a little outreach into the community, specifically to the different religious communities, and ask them if it would be appropriate, with COVENTA, to have the place blessed. If, in fact, human fetuses were burned at that facility, I know that it's not a holy facility, it's not designated to take care of human remains. And I know that other people that I have talked to have been absolutely outraged and stunned. And I think that would be a way to provide the community with an opportunity for healing. They don't have to participate, it's not a government-sponsored event, it's working with COVENTA and the different religious community leaders. If they choose that that's something that they believe will help the community heal, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Kim?
I too want to congratulate you. It was a very difficult situation, I'm sure, to be faced with that. And as I heard the news, it sickened me. And I just can't even imagine, as I think about it, what a heinous thing that is. And I want to thank you for reacting so quickly to that, and representing Marion County residents very well. While it would be an inconvenience to those 20 people involved in that board meeting, there is nothing more important than life, and we must, at all costs, stand up for the value of human life. And so even if it means that that board meeting would have to be rescheduled, it was something that needed to be addressed extremely quickly, in order to make sure that there was no question about the stance of the county in that. It is something that cannot be allowed to continue, and I thank you very much for representing us well, again, in your actions.
Kevin?
Thank you for the job you did. I wasn't there, I don't know how I would have reacted. Not, I guess one of you pays attention to your email while you're in meetings, the other one I don't think does. And I'd probably be on the ladder of that, because I can't keep up with all my emails. I think you did a great job. And the only, I don't even want to talk about this. This is a really, the reason this is an issue is because when you devalue life one bit, things happen. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. Marty?
It's hard going forth on a question like this. I was really impressed with how you handled the situation, how quickly you had a meeting called and made your decisions to stop what was going on. What I would have done, had I been in this 20-person meeting, is I would have completed the meeting, because I would have a responsibility also to these people, since my vote was needed for a quorum. I kind of look at 9/11, when Bush was talking to students at an elementary school, when the planes went into the towers. He did not rush from the room, he didn't probably stay as long as he had planned originally, but he finished up with those children, and then went on to do the job that he needed to do as commander-in-chief. So probably I would want to make sure the meeting that I was in happened quickly, letting them know there was an emergency I needed to attend to, so anything I needed to vote on could be taken care of at the beginning of the meeting, so I could leave. Probably one of the first things I would have done, after the meeting then, is I would have read the article, and then contacted legal, to see if I could have put an immediate stop on any more burning or taking of human products, until we knew what was going on. Then I would want to be meeting, obviously, with Public Works, and even though I don't believe in micromanagement, normally would not want to, you know, go and talk to maybe, or, I wouldn't say, wouldn't talk to, I wouldn't want to bother the people, you know, that are getting the waste. I would want to talk to them, I would want to know what they know. I would then call the emergency meeting, and put a stop to any receipt of infectious waste, until it can be assured that there are no human remains in the shipment, because that's what they are, they're human remains. They deserve to be treated with respect, not the same as somebody's cut-off finger, or whatever, they're a human being.
Thank you.
Just a second, all right. Well, I had an order, who do you have next?
I've got Kim being asked.
That's what I had to, okay. Looking at the county commissioner job description that's included in this packet, will you commit to fully execute the responsibilities of the full-time county commissioner position, as listed, to the best of your ability, for the period of your appointment? Could be yes or no, but we're looking for more.
Okay, yes, yes, I would. Taking an oath of office is something that I take very seriously. I did it as an Army officer. And upholding the Constitution is a way of life, and it's something that you don't sleep from. I mean, everything that you do must be considered in light of that position. As a commissioner, you are one of the three leaders of this county, and I would take that position very seriously, and would do it to the best of my ability, serving on any committees that I was appointed to, helping to provide direction and leadership throughout the time in office.
Kevin?
The answer is yes, to the best of my ability. And I think one of the things we need to be very cautious about, as we go forth in our lives, is understanding our limitations, and planning for those, and making sure that we are focused on the priorities of the job, and not trying to do too much. And so that'll be something that I would, as I continue to learn more about the responsibilities and all those boards and commissions that are listed, I think, on the last, the last serves on numerous boards and commissions, is to really question, do we need all those, and can they be consolidated, et cetera? Always questioning, how can we do our jobs more efficiently, and better, and focused? I want to come back to the COVENTA question really quick. And I wrote down the word "staff" and circled it, because you're in the meeting, and you have surrounded yourself with staff, and that's the phone call that make, or that's the email to your chief administrative officer, and those are the people that are going to really make those things happen quickly. So we have limitations as individuals, and we've got to surround ourselves with great people to make those things happen. So compliments to the staff as well, to get that done as fast as they did.
Of course, I had the, oh, sorry, you finished, right?
Go ahead, Marty.
I had the one-word answer, yes, but since you want more, I understand that it is not just an eight-to-five job. I understand there's breakfast meetings, and meetings at night, when members of the public will maybe come and talk in different formats. And I am more than willing and happy to give it my all for this short time of six months, and I have full buy-in by my teenager. He says, "It's okay, Mom, you can go work now if you want to." So I have full support from my family as well.
The most precious natural resource that Marion County has are its people. And if you feel that my talents... The most precious national, natural resource that Marion County has are its people. And if you feel that my talents will serve the community and the citizens of Marion County, I would be honored to take the oath of office. I would uphold the Constitution of Oregon and the United States Constitution, and I would carry out any duties that are asked of me. I would do it with utmost respect, professionalism, and integrity. I would try to work with each of the members, whether there's a conflict or whether we're having a good time, to try to resolve any issue that comes before the board. And I pledge here and now to work with you guys if you appoint me.
So we are on the closing statement, so we bumped back up to five minutes, correct? And we will start with Kevin.
Once again, thank you, Commissioner Brentano and Commissioner Carlson, for having us here today. And I want to thank my colleagues, who are also great Americans stepping up to serve. And we all have an opportunity to do that in many places in our lives, and this is just one of them. And this is, this is something that, for me, I know regardless of what your decision is today, that I will serve someplace. And I've always said that about my political career. I hear people say, "Well, they're not politicians." Well, neither was I. And I guess I, it's, once you get elected, you become political, so I guess I am a politician. I'm still in denial. But regardless of the outcome of any election, life will be okay for me. And regardless of the outcome of this decision, life will be okay. I'm on the ballot. I am the candidate for the Republican nomination. The primary is on the 20th. I will assume that that will happen. I will be on the ballot in November. I've been working towards this job in serving for the last year and trying to learn about it, as well as maintain my duties as a state representative and the capacity to keep our business going in the limited things that I have to do there. I'm surrounded by great staff, great people that keep me pointed in the right direction, two of which are sitting here today. And I want to publicly recognize Denise Bowles and Raquel Moore-Green, who have been such an asset, as you well know, in making your job, your ability to do your job. And as I move forward, I think that that is critical, that we have surrounded ourselves with good people. So I thank you for your service. I thank you for the staff that is here today. But I want you to know, and the public to know, that regardless of the outcome of this appointment process, I will still run a hard, service-oriented campaign, getting to know people, listening to people, and would love, either way, to serve as the next Marion County Commissioner come next January. And if I get the opportunity to be appointed early, it'll just help me get started a little bit early to serve the people of Marion County. Thank you very much.
Marty?
First of all, I wanted to add to the volunteer services question a little something, even though it's not exactly volunteer. It's kind of compulsory, and that's being on a jury. I have been on a jury, as well as a grand jury. And if you've never been on a grand jury, that's two weeks of your time every other day, listening all day long. It's quite, quite an interesting experience. I would like to thank the Republican PCPs of Marion County, that they had enough trust in my ability to perform this job to allow me to be here today. And I want to thank you commissioners, because I know that you will give careful consideration to each and every one of us here on the panel. I love Marion County, and I would love the opportunity to give back to my county. It might be a little easier for me because I know it's only a temporary thing, and then, you know, I go back to whatever I want. I know it would be a great experience. So I would truly be honored to be able to serve the residents of Marion County as their interim county commissioner.
So I guess we're back to where we started. You guys have an awesome responsibility. Marion County residents are relying on you to make the right decision. You've got high caliber, high-quality people that I think each one of has made clear that they're willing, ready, and able to serve. So I don't really feel that, you know, I did leave that I go Beavs. I am a graduate of OSU. I think I forgot to mention that. But to the most part, you know, whatever the outcome, whatever decision you folks make, it'll be the right decision. And, you know, rest assured, Marion County residents will have somebody to represent them through the next election. I would be honored if it's me. And if it's not, I pledge to these folks that, and to you, if you guys feel that I have some talents that can be useful somewhere else, feel free to let me know. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Kim, you get the last word.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Carlson and Commissioner Brentano, again, for the opportunity to be here. I too want to thank the PCPs for their trust in each of us to represent them for the remainder of this term, for whoever it is that you pick. I want to thank you publicly as well for a very fair and open process in selecting the position or the replacement for Commissioner Milne. As you know, I am currently campaigning for a position as a county commissioner. I am running because I care so deeply about my community. I grew up in a family where service is a way of life. I had a mother who was a nurse and worked with geriatrics, as well as in the mental health field, a father who was an Army officer who served in Vietnam, and then spent 27 years serving as a police officer here in the city of Salem. I have many family members who have served as firefighters, both in volunteer areas. And then again, me as an Army officer as well. And now I want to serve again as a county commissioner, to serve my community and to give back to the people here. I enjoy working with people and hope to work to get citizens more engaged in their community. Having never served in political office, I bring a very different perspective. It is good to have fresh ideas, out-of-the-box thinking to provide solutions that may not have been considered before, from somebody with a diverse background. We have many challenges facing us. We have a county that is doing well, but still, there is a lot of uncertainty in the minds of many people here in Marion County. And I want to help the two of you to continue to move our county in a positive direction. Warren Bennett said, "Managers are people who do things right. Leaders are people who do the right thing." I pledge, if selected as a Marion County Commissioner, that I will do the right thing.
Well, it says we may make some comments, or actually, one says it will, so you're probably the will person. Would you like to go ahead?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for stepping forward, for putting your name out there. I shared the story, actually, it was in our editorial board meeting, I think, when I stepped forward to be a state senator. The PCPs nominated me back in 1998, I think it was. And a very scary process. I didn't know anything. I couldn't even remember the number of the senate district when I was asked in line when we were signing up and wasn't quite sure what to expect. So you all have remarkably presented yourself today, and I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to learn and to be part of the process. And this process is outlined in Oregon statute, as we know. We don't choose how we do this, and the PCPs can choose to choose three or five. They chose four, and you all qualify and came forward. I just wanted to make a couple comments on each of your remarks, things that stood out. Kevin, I'll start with you. Abraham Lincoln was also my favorite president. However, I would sit underneath TV trays with a blanket over them with a flashlight and read the pilgrims' progress. That was my, my role play with Abraham Lincoln. I just thought that was really cool. And I had a little chalkboard and pretended like it was coal, and I wrote on it. But that is not a definitive criteria to be a county commissioner in Marion County, liking Abraham Lincoln. I would also like to say that your comment about hope and teaching children, high school students in particular, to have hope. One of my favorite films is The Shawshank Redemption, and it talks about hope being a good thing, in fact, the best of things. And I think that if we all can have more hope, we would be a better nation. Marty, I loved your comment about the local government triangle. I can't tell you how many times in driving around between meetings I have thought about how wonderful it would be if things were just flipped, and all of that Medicaid money that we're dealing with wasn't controlled by the federal government, was controlled by us, and we could create the kind of thing that we wanted to do for the people of Marion County that need those services. I was very impressed that you had read the summary budget. I hope you were able to stay awake when you did that. And I was going to mention your, congratulating you on jury duty. I have been called a few times, but have never actually been selected for the jury. But you do have a judge behind you that I'm sure is also thankful for people that serve on juries. He came in late, and we didn't have an opportunity to acknowledge Judge Hart. And James, graduate of OSU, this is good, because if you graduated from U of O, you would not, in Sam's mind, be able to serve on the Board of Commissioners.
That's not true. But if they liked rhubarb and went to Oregon, they're out.
Right. It's very close. We've had some comments on camera about that, and also an incident where there was a luncheon Eugene that he just couldn't stay for, so, when Dave Fronmeyer was speaking. So I know that that's, that's an issue here on our board that he takes very seriously, in all seriousness. I appreciated you sharing that you're learning more about the mental health issues. And I think that that's something that, as you learn about that from a personal level, can perhaps understand better why we are so passionate in Marion County about preserving the services that we have and that we've developed for that population. And also, I congratulate you on taking the initiative to meet some of our department heads and elected officials. And I know you also spent time with John Latimer to learn more about the county, and I appreciate that. And Kim, your connection with veterans is just awesome. Thank you for your service as a veteran. Thank you. We don't have much of a connection with veterans in Marion County because we are in Salem, and Polk and Marion Counties have an agreement with the state that we're still trying to find out whether that agreement is going to continue, that the state provides those veteran services, and we don't have veteran services officers in our county. When I go to state meetings through the Association of Oregon Counties, other counties are much more invested in veteran services, put general fund into that. But as you mentioned, we do have this Veterans Task Force that we've started, and I just think it would be awesome if you were involved in that at some level. And I'm just excited about the opportunity for us to get more engaged in that issue. And then your comment about getting citizens more engaged in the county generally, I can't tell you how we have tried and struggled to do that, and to have someone out there that has some ideas about that, I think, would be very welcome for us in Marion County. We're limited. We are in a Portland TV market, and when we have the kind of issue that we talked about in one of the questions, we get cameras coming down. But just sort of your day-to-day county types of business, they're not all that interested. We have one local newspaper for Salem, Statesman Journal, that provides some coverage for us. We have weekly and bi-weekly papers around the county. But it's very hard to get people, I mean, you all have been involved in watching the county. And my guess is that when you talk to people about what the county does, you get the same kinds of responses I do. Is a county commissioner a full-time job? Can you tell me again, what does the county do? What are you responsible for? There's just not a lot of understanding. And for as much as we've kind of tried to stand on our heads and have websites and Facebook pages, and Patty did the, Marion County, you're a community partner on CCTV. I do a little program called How Are the Children? Still, there's a lot of lack of understanding or awareness out in our community about the county. So that's a great opportunity. I would like to thank all of you for your thoughtful answers to the question we posed, kind of our, what do we call it, our scenario question. It was, the COVENTA issue was a very difficult issue for us to go through, hit us quite by surprise and very suddenly. And I thought your answers were on target and were thoughtful. And certainly, all of you, I know, support life the way that we do as commissioners. And that was probably the preeminent issue, is we were working through what we might do. Also, I think, I can't remember who mentioned calling the county administrator, might have been Kevin or Kim, but it was really Jan Fritz that we called, just so that you know. And she was busy because we had just moved back into Courthouse Square, and John was downstairs, and Jolene was, I can't remember where you were. You were out, and so, you know, it's like, so who is there? So Jan came to the phone and then realized the enormity of the issue and went to work immediately. And because of the work of her and the other staff in the office, we were able to convene that meeting the next morning. And the last comment that I would make is, as you all mentioned, in looking at the position description, being a county commissioner is a full-time job. We have a sort of job-duty statement that goes before a compensation board that determines what the salary is. The commissioners don't determine our own salaries. We have a, I think by law, we have a compensation board that does that. But this, these are the duties that they see. And then we added supervising the chief administrative officer, because that is something that we do, or try to do. And, and then I think tweak the language a little bit on the quasi-judicial role as a land-use appeals board. But James, as you mentioned, we are really one of the few branches, one of the few positions in government and local government, which I agree is where it's at, where we hold all three of those powers in one position. Executive power as a management position, as you say, Kim, legislative power as we set policy, and then quasi-judicial power as we hear land use appeals. And I, someone told me once, and I don't know if this is true, that the only other entity that does that is the IRS. So I don't know if I'd say we are in good company there or not. But what that does is it creates quite a bit of responsibility in one three-person board. And so, again, we thank you very much for your willingness to serve in that capacity, and wish you all well in your future endeavors as we go back and make this very difficult deliberation.
See, that's why she went first, because she'll have all the great comments. So now, I have a couple. First, the obvious one, you know, thanks for stepping up and being here today, and again, for your answers. I can very honestly say this, and I, exactly what I've done for the last hour is tried to picture all of you in the position. And my point is, I could see any of you doing the job. And I think, James, you've talked a couple times about how hard it'll be to decide. That is what makes it hard. So the good news for Marion County is I think any can do it, and we'll try to find who can do it best. So it'll be an interesting week with thinking. One little comment, well, I should have added this at the beginning. When I went through the same process, I gave a, I gave a little background of mine. I have to have fun at anything I do, and it takes you a lot of nice places. And so I hope whoever's here likes to have fun, too. I mean, you get the job done, but it can't be a dreadful chore to come in each day. So I'm looking at you, Marty, and I think when you gave your, I think she wants my job. And it won't rule you out, because I think you could probably do it better. And now the last fun thing. Commissioner Milne would have a fit if you ever called her Commissioner Milney. Now, I'm not quite so serious about it, but I don't want to go the next two and a half years with you guys not knowing the correct way to say it. It's Brentano. And the folks in St. Paul probably have a fit if you threw the Brentano thing at them. Here in the county, it kind of sounds official, maybe seems right, but it is Brentano, and I hope you'll learn it. That's all I have, except to say where we'll be going from here. Anything else? Anybody else wants to add?
Well, maybe just on the last little note, I know that Commissioner Brentano has not often let people know how his name is pronounced. And at one point, I wrote a script for someone and put the little sign for a short A over the top of it, so people would say Brentano. And the person, instead of saying Brentano, said Commissioner Brentano, as they were making their remarks. It's like, can't win.
All right. Maybe you can't. Can't be done right. All right. Some, yes, things of note, I'm just presented, and we have a series of... at least, I thought 50, there may be more than that, letters that have been submitted, mostly emails. That, we opened that on April 26th, or 22nd, and we'll hold a public record open to accept those comments from the public until 5:00 on Friday, May 16th. And so we'll enter these into the record, and then the next step is a special board session on Tuesday, May 20th, at 3:00, and Janet and I will deliberate, deliberate, and take action on appointing one of the nominees to the vacant commissioner position. I left a little bit out when I was giving Marty about time about these positions, and I just, for your sake and for the public, I fully anticipate then, when the new commissioner is selected, we'll look at all our different assignments and interests and try to balance out that which best serves the county. I don't know where we'll go with that, but that will probably be one of the more interesting and immediate discussions. So again, we'll meet again Tuesday, May 20th, at 3:00. It says we will take action. What if we can't agree? Have you dealt with that yet?
We always agree.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
Fine. All right, with that, good news, we'll call this meeting adjourned.